Called the meeting to order and we thank you for giving us the opportunity to serve you. And we're glad you're here tonight. We want to call on now Pastor Stan Riddle from Camp Manna to lead us in the invocation.
Let's pray. Father, we are so grateful for your eternal love. We thank you, God, how much that even when, Father, we seem to be unlovable, you still love us. We're thankful for that. We're thankful for your mercy. Your word tells us your mercy is new every morning. And so, Father, we're grateful for your mercy. We're especially thankful, Father, for your grace. Father, we don't deserve all the wonderful things that you give us every day. Just a gift of life, we're thankful for that. Father, I ask tonight that you give this board wisdom. I pray that you give them wisdom to seek you, to seek your wisdom. For you tell us in the Book of James that if any man needs wisdom, to ask you and you'll give it to us. And, Father, your wisdom's always best. So I pray that you work in this board's heart and life that, Father, they would, they would seek you to, to do the right things for this county. And, Father, I pray you give them wisdom to, to make good decisions that'll, that'll affect people in this county for, for years. And so, Father, I just, I just thank you for people who are willing to stand up and do this job. I pray you bless them. I pray you watch over them. I pray for the folks who are here tonight, God, that you would give ears to hear and, Father, they will hear clearly all that said and at the appropriate time, Father, they will share thoughts that, that may give some insight to this board to know how to, to make the right decisions. So, Father, we're grateful that we live in a country where we're free and that we can worship you and we're thankful for that. And we just pray tonight that we'll bring glory and honor to you and everything that's done and said in this place. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Our invocation, our pledge tonight will be given by, led by Mr. Kyle Greenwood. Kyle is a native of Forsyth County. He was born in the Old Cass Stevens Clinic on Stratford Road. Kyle joined the U.S. Army at nineteen before he could be drafted. He went to basic training at Fort Jackson, South Carolina, and immediately married the love of his life four days after graduation. Kyle was then sent to Fort Gordon, Georgia for AIT training. He was trained as a teletypist communication specialist. He was with the ASA Army Security Agency. After AIT, he was shipped off to Germany where he spent two and a half years. He was discharged from the Army in nineteen seventy-four. Kyle then went to work, went to college at UNCG and obtained a BS in math. He worked for three different corporations, Johnson Controls, Sarah Lee, and Atrium Windows and Doors, where he retired from in two thousand and seventeen. Thank you for your service and thank you for being here with us tonight.
Okay, if we'll all stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thanks for having me. My spine sort of tingles every time I say that, so but anyway. But I enjoy living in this county, enjoy living in the United States, and I enjoy serving, you know, our country. It was a privilege. We got to see things that we'd never seen before, you know, because we went to France, England, you know. People driving along the side of the road, I couldn't ever understand that. But other than that, we just had a great time. And our first daughter was born there in Augsburg, Germany.
Wow.
Yeah. And so, we went back last year. I'm gonna get out here. I know y'all got a lot to do.
Oh, you're okay.
Back last year to Germany. So we was gonna show her where she was born. Well, they tore down all the barracks, all the hospitals, everything. But we did find the apartment where she first lived her first two months there.
Wow.
So, again, thank you all for having me. I enjoyed it.
Thank you for being here. We appreciate you. Ethics and conflict disclosure, Mr. Vogler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, North Carolina Journal Statute one sixty-eight dash eighty-six and Davie County Board of Commissioners' Code of Ethics adopted December two thousand and nineteen. I would ask each of you, before you adopt the agenda, if there's any actual potential or perceived conflicts of interest with respect to any matter that's on the proposed agenda which you might be voting on tonight. If so, if you would please speak up now, so, before the agenda's adopted. Seeing no one speak up, Mr. Speaker, I mean, Mr. Chair, I would conclude there's no actual potential or perceived conflicts of interest.
Thank you, Mr. Vogler. Before we adopt the agenda, item H under the consent agenda, resolution for contract execution of Davie County Custodial Services. If we will, we will move that to item, if I am not correct here, please let me know, Mr. Vogler, item twelve A under new business. And we may defer it, but we will, we will pull it off the consent agenda at this point and move it there. Am I okay without an?
You're fine with that.
Okay. All right. So with that correction, do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
As amended.
As amended, yes.
Do we have a second? Mr. Renninger, all in favor? Okay. Public comment period.
Mr. Chair, no one has signed up for the comment tonight.
We will then go to public hearings. Public hearing on the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five proposed budget and capital improvement plan.
Good evening. As a review, last board meeting in May, we presented the general fund and the public utilities funds, capital improvement plan, planned the projects associated with those. And just as a refresher, we do that plan, those refreshes, every year. So what we're asking the board to consider tonight is just the projects that are going to happen in fiscal year twenty-five, because we'll be doing it all again in the fall and refreshing that plan. And tonight, we have Mitch from Davenport, who will go over the other side of the capital improvement plan as far as the funding and that kind of thing and affordability. So just let us know if you have any questions. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, thank you for having me back again this evening. I know y'all have busy agenda, so I'll be quick tonight. I think we spoke about this last year and previous years as well. Nothing really new to share as part of this year's updates. I'll move through this pretty quickly, but if you have any questions, please stop me along the way. Happy to, to dig in. Let me get the presentation up here real quick. Great, sorry, one second. All right, can anybody see that? All right, so just starting out quickly on the front end, overview of the county's credit rating. The county has a very strong credit rating, double A-two from Moody's Investor Service, double A-plus from Standard and Poor's. Those are the two most common rating agencies for counties like yourselves. And essentially, what that means is you all are in, you know, the top third of all counties nationally with that credit rating. I mean, top fifty percent of all counties nationally with that credit rating. It sets you up to be able to borrow funds to fund capital at attractive interest rates if you choose to do that. So as we talked about last year, you know, the only, the major project out there that could be a potential finance project like the jail, you have the ability to access capital markets when and if you are ready to, to fund that project. So you're set up nicely there, very good credit rating, manage yourselves well, and this is just kind of a reassurance of that. What does that mean for you all? Well, to have that good credit rating, well, just big picture, the rating agencies have some established methodologies that they go through. But what you all have control over are these two components in the top left, financial performance and leverage, or said another way, financial performance and your debt profile. The other two components, economy, institutional framework, you're a county in North Carolina and you're located where you're located. Those are kind of the drivers of those two performances. You, as a board, don't have a lot of direct control over that, and that makes up forty percent of the overall rating methodology. The other sixty percent, your financial performance and your debt profile, you do have direct control over. And what these double A ratings tell us is that from a third party's perspective, under their methodologies, you've managed that, both of those components very well to be rated in that double A category. So again, you're in good shape there. I think this just reiterates the way that you all have managed yourselves historically. So with that, I'm gonna kind of transition into some of the, the information we've talked about in the past related to your debt profile, just as a refresher. So as of June thirty of two thousand and twenty-three, you had about fifty-three point six million of debt outstanding. The bulk of that was in general obligation bonds, thirty-nine point three million. And within those CIOs, the bulk of that was the, the high school financing done in two thousand and fifteen. So, pretty minimal debt outstanding in the grand scheme of things, particularly when the bulk of that is tied up in one financing. And you're repaying this debt very quickly, right? You see, everything's kind of front-loaded to the left on that chart. You are repaying over ninety percent of all of this debt outstanding in the first ten years. So, you know, within ten years, you'll have retired over forty-five million dollars of the debt that you have outstanding. Puts you in very good position and, you know, to reduce that debt burden and/or to consider additional projects in the future as they become necessary. And as part of the management of that debt profile, you all have adopted a series of debt-related financial policies on page eight. The first is what I just talked about, that ten-year payout ratio. How much of your debt are you retiring in the first ten years? And at over ninety percent, you're well in compliance with your fifty-five percent policy, right? You have a policy to repay fifty-five percent of your debt outstanding within ten years. You're well above that. Just shows that when you're issuing the debt, you're paying it back responsibly and quickly. The second policy you have is debt to assessed value. So debt outstanding as a percentage of your tax base. You have a maximum amount of two and a half percent. That's good policy, typical policy's range in the two to three percent range. So you're kind of right there in the middle of a typical policy range, but yet you're well below that level in under one percent debt outstanding as a percentage of your tax base. So well in compliance with that policy. And, and down below, we've compared you to the medians of both national and North Carolina double A-rated issuers by Moody's. The national medians, you'll lose a little bit of comparability because, you know, folks in places like South Carolina have independent school districts. Counties in South Carolina do not have school debt on their books. They're not responsible for funding school debt, so their debt burden tends to be a little bit lower. When we compare you to the dark green bars here at the bottom, these are the North Carolina double A-rated counties, you can see you're kind of right in line with the, the highest-rated medians, the, the triple A and the double A-one medians, slightly above the double A-two median, but well within the range there. So from a policy perspective, compared to your peers, you're right in line, very solid position to be in related to this debt ratio. The last debt ratio that you have a policy on is debt service as a percentage of expenditures. You have a policy of fifteen percent, not to exceed fifteen percent, annual debt payments, principal plus interest as a percentage of your overall governmental budget. And again, this is a measure of the debt burden outstanding within the county. It's also a measure of budgetary flexibility, right? You can't, you know, your debt service is a fixed payment, can't change it throughout the year. So you know that's gonna be built in to your budget and you gotta pay it. And you all are sitting just over eleven percent debt service as a percentage of expenditures, well below that fifteen percent policy level. And again, below or right in line with these North Carolina medians. So overall, you're starting from, in our opinion, a position of strength related to your debt profile, related to the policies you have, related to your peers. So that sets us up to look at one other component here that I'm not gonna go into a lot of detail on. We've looked at this and talked about this a lot over the years, but this is the debt affordability component, right? Those debt ratios, those policies are what we refer to as your debt capacity, right? How much debt you could issue or have you issued compared to your policies? That's kind of your capacity to take on new debt. Think about it as, you know, getting pre-qualified for a mortgage. And you have debt capacity. The other half of the coin is affordability, right? I can get pre-qualified for a mortgage, but can I make the monthly payments? Similarly, debt affordability, you have capacity under your ratios. What does your cash flow look like? And I will point out one slight tweak to this from prior years. In this analysis, we, we're not factoring in the high school debt. That has the dedicated funding source, the dedicated tax rate for that high school debt. So to take some noise out of the discussion here, we've kind of set that off to the side. We know that's covered and that tax rate is gonna cover the debt service and it's gonna be reduced over time as the debt service gets paid off. So we've set that aside and we're looking at only the county debt excluding the high school debt. Column H is the total requirement. So this is your, your debt outstanding, your annual payments going out. And column L is the revenues available to pay that debt service, namely, the largest component being the six point three six cent property tax rate. Again, not including that, that tax rate going towards the high school. And so, column M then shows us the difference between the requirements in H and the revenues available in L. And there is a surplus every year. There's, you have revenues over your fixed requirements. And that column M is the affordability you have to fund capital projects in the future. That's what we're gonna be looking to take advantage of when we look at your CIP and measure the potential impact of that. Okay, please, I'm going quickly here, so jump in if you want me to slow down and have questions. So that kind of sets us up to say you've got debt capacity, you have some debt affordability. How does that compare to your CIP and the potential project funding? This is what Robin alluded to, I think you all talked about at your last meeting. Lines one through eight are the projects under consideration as, as part of the current CIP. And, and it's a total of forty-six point four million dollars. The bulk of that is in that green highlighted cell, that's the detention center. We are assuming that the detention center will be funded through a financing if you choose to move forward with that project. And as part of the financing, we would fund this, this estimated thirty-five point three million of construction plus reimburse the county for roughly two million dollars of, of design and preliminary related expenses. So that's why you see the financing down on line sixteen is the thirty-seven million compared to the thirty-five million of remaining estimated construction costs. What's not shown on this list, and this is in the bullet at the bottom of the page, this does not include kind of the annual ongoing capital requirements that the county funds, the, the vehicles and, and equipment replacement projects, preventative maintenance, ongoing maintenance type projects. All of that is built into the operating budget. These are what we're reflecting here on the CIP is what I'd call the major capital projects, the larger, more infrequent in nature capital projects. That's what's captured on the CIP. Last thing I'll point out on this page in terms of the funding, again, all of this is cash-funded except for the one financing assumed for the jail. And then there is in fiscal year twenty-nine, the last year of the CIP, a civic agricultural center. That is assumed to be grant-funded at this point in time. So the idea is that's no out-of-pocket funding required by the county. It's on the CIP and would be funded if outside grant and other contributions become available. So that is not impacting any of the cash flows that we'll look at associated with the CIP. Do you have a little more detail on some of the, the larger projects and grant funding available on page thirteen with some descriptions? I won't bore you with that tonight. I think y'all have covered most of this already. But what I do want to just show you is, as we get in to page fourteen, this is what your debt profile is assumed to look like if the, the detention center project is funded. The dark green bars on the left are your existing debt service. And so if we're looking at this top-left chart, this is your annual principal plus interest payments. The dark green is your existing long-term debt. The gray bars denote the annual vehicle and equipment financings that you do. That's your sort of annual lease program for your rolling stock. That's assumed to continue. So those gray bars include your existing and potential future vehicle funding program. And then the light green bars are the debt assumed to be funded by the, for the detention center. So you can see how that layers on, on top of your existing debt profile. In total, we're assuming, you know, a twenty-year financing at a five percent interest rate. The thirty-seven point two million jail financing would result in principal plus interest payments of fifty-six point eight million at these interest rates in this term. What I'll tell you is today, you're looking more like four percent, maybe a little less on that financing if you were to do it today. But for planning purposes, we do build some cushion into that number, so assuming the five percent planning interest rate. Okay? When we layer this, this potential proposed debt on top of your existing debt ratios, obviously it increases, but it still stays in compliance with your policy. You know, well in compliance with the ten-year payout ratio, with the debt to assessed value policy, and the debt service to expenditures policy. That debt service to expenditures policy at fifteen percent is kind of the limiting factor, right? You get closest to your policy on that chart on the bottom, but you're still below the policy level based upon our assumptions. So if you choose to move forward with that project, you do have the debt capacity to fund it within these ratios. So last thing I'll point out, and this chart gets a little small because we had to pull in a few more columns here. But this is a look at that cash flow analysis if we were to fund the CIP as it's currently laid out. And, and a couple of changes that we've made, we're, again, assuming the vehicle and equipment funding continues in column C. Column D is where we've layered in the, the proposed debt service, again, for the detention center, twenty years at five percent, and that's that fifty-six point eight million of total payments. We do have in column E as well, the, the planned pay-as-you-go capital projects within the CIP. And so that adjusts our total requirements in column H. And we, and we have, compare that again to column L. And what we see is where we had those surpluses every year, now there's some deficits because of that detention center financing. And so if that were to move forward next year, we are anticipating that there would be some shortfalls that would total up to a little over six and a half million dollars of a total shortfall. And we've equated that to if you were to come up with the equivalent amount of revenue of one point four four pennies in fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six, that would eliminate that shortfall. So through some combination of existing budget, new revenues, the equivalent of one point four four cents or eight hundred and thirty thousand, that's what would be needed to eliminate that shortfall. Obviously, interest rates come in better, lower than the five percent, that amount goes down. But based upon these numbers, that's kind of the shortfall that we're seeing at this point. So have the debt capacity, the question is the cash flow side, and are there options to do that? Or, you know, do you look at things on the project side as well? So that's kind of where we stand, pretty similar situation to what we saw last year. And that'll just kind of be the question going forward.
Can we ask questions?
Please.
So on this detention center, would it make sense to try to match the life of the asset to a further, an extended term? I mean, I hope it lasts longer than twenty years.
Yes, certainly, certainly a consideration. From a tax perspective, from the IRS perspective, that's kind of what we look to and you're kind of limited to financing it over the useful life of the asset, which, you know, like you said, for this, maybe thirty or forty years. From the local government commission standpoint in North Carolina, they've kind of taken a line to say maximum of twenty-year term for governmental projects. So that's kind of the default. In order to go out to a longer term, the only real exceptions we see to that are for things like a USDA financing. For USDA, the local government commission will allow you to go out a little bit longer on that. Now, USDA has its own set of considerations, you know, procurement, different procurement requirements, everything has to line up with the federal procurement requirements. You have to apply and be approved for that type of loan. And then, you know, it's a question of cash flow, right? Lower annual payments with the longer term versus longer term comes with higher interest overall, and that's kind of the balancing act. But certainly happy to look at alternatives if that's desired. But from a traditional financing perspective, we kind of leave it to the twenty years as to what the LGC would like to see. And that's what we know we can deliver on. The USDA would have some questions about the application process, about being able to qualify for their loan program, those kind of things.
Any other questions?
So based on the deficit you were speaking of, over how many years would we be in a deficit based on, I mean, the, the one you mentioned, it was one point four four cents?
Yes.
For how many years would we be in a deficit of that nature?
So, so mathematically, right, what we've done is we looked at our assumptions for your current expenses and your current revenues. And, and without any new revenues, without any overperformance in the revenue budget or dedicating new revenue sources, we're, we were calculating a deficit from fiscal year twenty-seven through fiscal year two thousand and thirty-six. So, you know, about a ten-year period of time. Now, the deficit starts out higher and then it lowers over time. We, in calculating the equivalent tax rate or the equivalent revenue impact, we have solved for what is the amount, if you just got it one time, that you could start setting aside and covering that deficit? That's the one point four four cents. If you were to do that, that would put you, if you look at column Q, back into a surplus mode by fiscal year twenty- year 2030. So that's where you could look at reducing the tax rate or continuing to fund further CIP projects. So overall, without any change in revenues, and under these assumptions, it's about a 10-year period of time, but if you got the one-point equivalent of 1.44 cents or 830,000, it would be, you would need that in place for about four years. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Other questions? Okay.
Well, detention center, what number are you using for our square footage?
Right now, right now, the square footage is at $700 per square foot.
Anything else? Okay, thank you.
Thank y'all.
Chairman, if you're ready, we'll move on to the next part of our presentation. On May 14th, we presented to you the recommended budget for fiscal year 2425. In the last three weeks, we've had some conversations with you. We've also looked at some additional numbers that we, the further you get into the fiscal year, the closer you get to June 30, if you always feel a little bit better about the numbers you're projecting for next year. So we've also taken an opportunity to look at some of our numbers. And what I wanted to present to you tonight, just so you know where we are as of June 3rd, as we open the public hearing, I wanted to give you some high-level overview of the numbers as they have changed very slightly since the presentation on May 14th. What you see here tonight, you will see a column here showing the recommended budget on May 14th versus where we are on June 3rd. And I basically, through this presentation, I've highlighted the changes directly. So the only changes that we have made in the recommended budget since we first presented it were on the general fund. As you can see, it's at 83,801,152, so slightly higher than the 83,791,652 that we presented on May 14th. All of our other funds, the numbers are all exactly the same as what we presented to you at the workshop. In the general fund, the major changes on the revenue side, we decreased the charges for services. We took a really hard look at one particular area, and we decided to scale it back just for the sake of, we did not want to set ourselves up. To make that change on the charges for services, we did make up that difference. It's roughly 25,000 was the main decrease, the charges for services. We added that to our appropriated fund balance to keep our budget balanced. So this is the major change on the revenue side. On the expense side, we did increase very slightly our safe and healthy community. Keep in mind, safe and healthy community, obviously, I think everybody first thinks of public safety, but this is also where we keep our health and human services. We made a change here, ever so slightly on the expense side of about $9,500 due to how we are funded through the state in our public health department where we have to show the budget to be able to get reimbursed later. So we don't think this will actually physically affect the overall dollars in and out, but we have to show it on paper at the front end. So this was our only general fund expense change from what we presented to you on May 14th. Utility fund, you know, we didn't spend a whole lot of time talking about this back on May 14th because it's pretty much set through our working with FAVTELIS. They came and presented to you a couple of weeks ago. Our Public Works, our Public Utilities folks do a fabulous job going through this throughout the year. So there was no changes from what we proposed on May 14th to what you see today. On our fee schedule, what we presented on the 14th, we did look at changing those fees associated with the solid waste site with Republic. As you can see, we've gone in several cases, more than a decade without a fee change. So this is the first year that they are proposing going up on those particular fees. So you can see, we did not make any changes in these fees since we presented on the 14th. So that being said, unless you have any specific questions, if you'd like to, you could open the public hearing for the budget. And even after the public hearings, if you still have questions, we'll be happy to answer.
Any questions at this point? Okay, Mr. Vogler?
Chair, this is the day and hour of the public hearing pursuant to North Carolina General Statutes, Local Budget, Fiscal Control Act on the proposed Davie County budget for the 2425 fiscal year and also for the capital improvement plan for '25 through '29 and the public utilities capital improvement plan. There's been due public notice given pursuant to the North Carolina General Statutes by way of publication of notice of the public hearing in the newspaper for general circulation in Davie County, and also notice on the county website. Proposed budgets have been on display with the clerk to the board as required by law for the proper period of time. The clerk of the board has attached the affidavit showing publication in said paper. I would ask all who wish to comment at this public hearing to come forward at this time to the podium, state your full name for the board, and then comment on the proposals. Mr. Chair, seeing no one come forward to comment, I would now turn the public hearing back over to you as board chair to close the public hearing comment section of this public hearing, provide the board the opportunity to discuss among yourself what, if any, action you wish to take with regards to this matter at this time.
Motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Ms. Finney, Mr. Pointexter, second. Any other discussion on that? All in favor? Okay. You just, you waiting on questions?
Yeah, I was just here in case you guys had any specific questions.
There you go.
Yeah.
Okay, couple of options here. Historically, we've done it a couple of different ways. We have passed the budget tonight, or we have deferred for a couple of weeks. There are always questions that come up. There are things that we, you may or may not have seen that you have questions about. So we will, we will open the floor for questions or a motion.
Well, I'm actually still combing through the budget. Whenever, this is not your full-time job. Three weeks is not a long time to go through all this information. I still had some questions out there. I told Brian last week, we met, but I didn't get all the way through my list. And most of all, we're still waiting for those parameters that go along with this proposed pay rate change. And I think it would not be, not be wise of us to pass those changes without having that information because I think that's very important. So my proposal would be for us to defer to a further meeting and give us just a little bit more time to look over the budget.
So is that a motion to defer?
I would make that a motion to defer and to establish additional time.
Yeah. How, how long do you think we need? In the context of it, it needs to be done by the end of the month. Two weeks will be the 17th.
Just for perspective, the information that you're asking for, I did ask feedback from the departments to send it to me. Vast majority of those departments have forwarded information back to me. And today, we set up meetings with those departments, primarily starting on Wednesday, going through, through next week. So if you were looking at two weeks, I think that would give plenty of time to put that information together and give it to you. The departments did a really good job of what they presented to me. I dare say most of it is probably ready to go, but we just haven't sat down individually and to discuss it. I would like to do that with them, and if that's your wish is to wait until then, then we, we will get it done by two weeks.
So, so you feel like you can have it done by the 17th?
Yes, based on the early information I've looked at, what they've sent me, like I said, they, they put it together. If I could line them all up in one day, I could probably knock it out, but it's just a matter of everybody's schedule.
But I want us to have enough time to study it and look over it. I don't want it to be given to us the day before our meeting, or the day of our meeting. So I want, I want to have time to, to look over it and to study it myself.
Does that give you that time?
Well, if that's, if that's the goal that you want, we will make it happen.
Okay, all right. So everybody's schedule okay for the 17th if we come in at this time? Six o'clock, okay?
You don't, you don't have to do it at six. You could do it during the day as well.
I'm, I'm flexible. Do what?
You could do it early morning.
All right, let's do this then. Benita, you want to amend to the 17th? We good at 10?
What time does it start?
Yeah, at 10.
All right, well, we can do, we can do 8:30. Good?
So if we have our meeting on that day, though, what day are you planning to give us the information to look over?
I have to check my calendar just to see. I don't want to give you a date right this second, but, I mean, the, the goal would be, if you're looking at Monday morning, you'd have all weekend to look at it.
Father's Day weekend. So I don't think many of these dads are going to look at it on Father's Day weekend, so.
A question I got, do we need to put it out a little bit further than two weeks?
We can go 24th. We can go to 24.
Just, just to be sure that we have plenty.
Everybody in town?
I think so.
Okay. Look at your, look at your calendars if you have them with you. All right. I better look at mine. Okay. Thank you. Okay, all right. And then, so we will go to the 24th then. And, Benita, you want to amend? We can go at 10, at, how are we there? Okay, 10 o'clock on the 24th. So Benita has made that motion. Do we have a second? Show seconds. Any further, any other questions? Okay. All in favor of deferring to the 24th at 10:00 a.m.? Uplifted hand. Okay, all right. Decipher the information, and the 24th will be speak now or forever hold your peace, okay? All right. So we'll be back on the 24th. All right. Robin, did you want to give us this month or April?
So you can see the April financial summary, starting on page 11 of your agenda packet. So this compares April 2024 with the prior year April year-to-date. So comparing the two, we've collected 1.8 million dollars more revenues than last fiscal year at this time. Some differences are still, tax, the property tax collections are the majority of that. We have about $7 million more expenditures. Most of that is due to the accounting of contributions made to other funds for projects. But also, we have capital purchases, capital purchases this fiscal year, including ambulances, the property on Main Church Road, as well as increase in property insurance and, and some grants that we have in Davie Violence Prevention Program. So as a frame of reference, we have April year-to-date revenues are 85% of estimates compared to 83% in last fiscal year, and expenditures are 73% of the budget. And 10 months' worth are 83.33%. So let me know if you have any questions.
Any questions?
Just one about the, we think our spending's at 73, even though
Yes.
mathematically, we're at 83 or 84. Okay. Do you perceive there to be any big, do you think it's going to stay below that, or there's going to be any, like, big-time expenditures that we would need to know about in these final two months?
No, I don't think so. April was our spending cutoff. That's why there's, you know, seems to be such a great amount of expenditures in April. However, I've took a little sneak peek at May, even though May's not finalized, since today's the first working day of June, and it seems to have sort of evened out for the month of May. So, you know, I still think that we're still be in pretty good shape by the end of the year.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else? Thank you, Robin. County managers report.
Mr. Chairman, due to the budget stuff tonight, I do not have a report.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda minus item H?
I make a motion to approve.
Ms. Finney, do we have a second? Mr. Renninger, seconds. Any discussion, anything? All right. All in favor? Look to hand. Any opposed? All right. We will go to old business, renaming of Sweat Trail, Moxville to Sweet Trail. Mr. Easter?
Thank you, Chairman. Went back and did some research with some of the questions that were raised at the last, at the public hearing. There are two addresses on Sweat Trail currently, 180 and 172, and the corresponding road names throughout the county, Sweetwater Circle, Sweetwood Lane, Sweet Creek Trail, Summer Sweet Drive, and Sweet Gum Drive. There are no corresponding addresses of the same. So there's only 180, 172 don't correspond with any of those other addresses throughout the county that have similar road names.
Any questions?
Tony, I will apologize for throwing that at you last month. It just dawned on me.
I understand.
And because, you know, the other discussions that we've had, I was like, oh, no, we don't want to, we just don't want to cause that if we can be
Absolutely. I didn't anticipate, and going, going forward, that when we do present that, we will do that. And I know those have been a, kind of a contentious issue throughout, and I apologize for not, for not looking into that, but I didn't even
I just thought of it.
Yeah, yes, ma'am. Well, thank you.
And I, I do hope this doesn't start a precedence, though. I mean, I don't want to go through a lot of road renaming constantly, but.
Any other questions? Okay. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Mr. Pointexter, do we have a second? Mr. Renninger, any other questions? All in favor? Uplifted hand. Okay. All right, thank you. Item 12A, we go back to resolution for contract execution of the Davie County Custodial Services. I think there have been a couple of questions here tonight. There's some discrepancy on when we actually saw these numbers. Unless someone has some questions here, I would like to get a motion to defer this to the 24th. And that way, those that do have questions will have time to discuss them with Brian or Robin in regards to this, this contract.
I would make that motion to defer to the 24th.
Okay, all right. So we'll put that on the agenda on the 24th. Do we have a second?
I'll say.
Okay. Any questions that we can, that you have right now? Okay, all right. We'll take a look at that, at, at that process and those contracts, and then we will approve that on the, on the 24th. All in favor? Any opposed? All right. Commissioners comments? Mr. Pointexter?
Like, thank everybody for coming out tonight. It's always good to see a pretty good crowd here. And I want to thank the county employees, everyone, for all the work that they have done helping prepare the budget for this coming year. I know that's a monumental task every year. And thanks to them for the good work that they do for the people in Davie County. Thank you.
Mr. Renninger?
Thank you. I want to thank everyone for coming out. Always good to see everyone. And I hope everyone summers off to a great start, and appreciate all the work on the budget. That's, as Mr. Pointexter said, that's a lot of work. So thank you very much. See you next month, I hope.
Mr. Jeff?
Like to thank everybody in this budget preparation, like the hard diligent work that went into it, and the, and the fact that, you know, we're not adding a lot of things and being fiscally responsible and still trying to deliver great services. I would like to, from time to time, I like to highlight departments and thank them for things. And what I'd like to do is reach out, because I had to deal directly with environmental health over a kind of an unforeseen unpleasant environmental health over a kind of an unforeseen unpleasant tree of needing new septic tank system, not just a septic tank and very professional, very thorough, um, gave great explanations. Uh, you know, I didn't want to put any pressure on them because of my position, but I, because I want them to do their job correctly, and I was very impressed. And, um, you know, we finally got the end result and I got my grass sowed before all that rain and we're in good shape, we think, so thank you.
Ms. Benita?
Thank you, everybody, for being here tonight. Um, what I really want to share with you tonight has nothing to do with county businesses, has everything to do with people. Sometimes our little bubble gets burst here, and I just want to remind you to watch out for your neighbors. Love on your family, love on your neighbors. If you think something's wrong or not, not just going right for someone that you love or someone that you know, don't be afraid to make a difference in their life and just be in prayer for the people in our county that are hurting today.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for being here. There's, uh, there are great things happening in Davie County. Uh, it's a great place to raise a family. It's a great place to run a business. Uh, we thank, it's a lot of staff here tonight, and we just thank you all for all you do, uh, for the citizens of this county. And, uh, so we are now going to go into closed session, and I'm going to read this one. Looks like it's a little longer than usual. Closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one forty three dash three one eight point one one A five to establish or to instruct the public body's staff or negotiating agents concerning the position to be taken by or on behalf of the public body in negotiating the price and other material terms of a contract or proposed contract for the acquisition of real property by purchase, option, exchange, or lease, or two, the amount of compensation or other material terms of an employment contract or proposed employment contract. Do I have a motion to go into closed session? Mr. Poindexter, do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Finney, all in favor? All right, we shall go into closed session. We'll be back here hopefully very shortly.
Yeah, they sound
Motion to go back into, uh, open session?
Motion to resume open session.
Mr. Poindexter, do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Finney, all in favor? All right.
Motion to adjourn.
Poindexter makes the motion to adjourn. Do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Finney, all in favor? We are adjourned.